The ninth meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. All council members are present this evening. Councillor Ike Benton will be a few minutes late. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councillor Peña. And during that moment of silence, let's keep in our thoughts and our prayers the young girl that was killed from Cleveland Middle School, Justine Alumina. Please rise.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Councillor Peña. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the signup table. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now under Item Three, Proclamations and Presentations. And the first proclamation will be read by Councillor Peña.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see Tui and Ima. Would you want to come up to the podium as I read the proclamation? And then it looks like you have a guest. Welcome. Whereas Cesar Estrada Chavez, who was born in 1927 near Yuma, Arizona, and moved to California with his family to work as a migrant farm worker during the Great Depression. Cesar Chavez experienced firsthand the harsh working conditions faced by most agricultural workers who were not provided even the most basic necessities such as clean drinking water, portable toilets, indoor plumbing, or cooking facilities. Cesar Chavez believed in social justice through nonviolence, using the picket line and the power of the boycott to peacefully bring about needed changes to the living and working conditions of millions of farm laborers and their families. Whereas in 1962, Cesar Chavez, along with many others dedicated farm workers, formed what was to become the United Farm Workers of America, securing historic labor and civil rights concessions for exploited and impoverished farm workers. And whereas Cesar Chavez gave his last ounce of strength to fight for equality, justice, and dignity for all Americans, dying peacefully in his sleep on April 23, 1993. And whereas Cesar Chavez left behind him a legacy of a lifetime of humble service and extraordinary achievement, a life recognized by President Bill Clinton on August 8, 1994 through the award of the Medal of Freedom, America's highest civilian honor. And whereas after Cesar Chavez died, local community members established the Recuerda Cesar y Chavez Committee, whose mission is to educate our youth and communities about the legacy, life, and work of the great American civil rights leader, Cesar Chavez, and to encourage each of us to carry on his values and timeless vision for a better world. And whereas the 24th Annual Cesar Chavez March and Festival will take place on Saturday, April 7, 2018, at the National Hispanic Cultural Center. Be it proclaimed by the Council of the Governing Body of the City of Albuquerque that Saturday, April 7, 2018, is Celebrate Cesar y Chavez Day. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Do you want to say a few words?
Well, thank you so much, Clarissa, for sharing those words. Well, my name is Pablo Cabrera. Good evening. I'm serving this year as the co-chair for the Recuerdas de Chavez Comité. And I just want to say thank you so much for the support that you provide to us. And definitely, we would like to share some, a little bit of things that we're doing in the community.
Gracias, Pablo. Councillor Peña, councillors, City of Albuquerque, thank you so much for your ongoing support throughout the years. We find ourselves this year celebrating the 25th Annual Recuerda Cesar Chavez Day. The marcha begins promptly, 10:30 a.m., at the National Hispanic Cultural Center. We invite each and every one of you, bring your families. It's definitely a family event. We have the honor of having Dolores Huerta with us again this year. She will be keynoting at 2:00 p.m. So the fiesta begins in the Plaza Mayor at the NHCC at 2:00 p.m. until 3:00. It's a family event. We truly invite you all. I think we're going to have beautiful weather. We braved a rainy, cold day last year, but the march will go on to honor this great leader. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Good evening. My name is Tui Martinez, and I'm one of the founders of the Recuerda Cesar Chavez Committee. As some of you that were here in the council, I know, Councilor Winter remembers so many years of us celebrating this event, always around this time of the year. We started, the very first one was when Cesar was here 25 years ago. Our late Vince Grego was, gave us the first proclamation, and he also, through his office, we sponsor the rally. We had Cesar Chavez right here at the Civic Plaza. And then three months after that, he died, unfortunately. But we continue his legacy through the work that we do in the community and all, and you know, thanks to all your support and support of past administrations, we've been able to keep it alive. And Asima was saying, you're all invited, and the public is invited. We have a lot of great things, especially because it's our 25th anniversary. So muchas gracias, and thanks for his continued support, Councillor Davis Peña and, well, Sanchez, I mean, so many of you Benton that have co-sponsored this for a few years now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Come up and receive your proclamation, and I just want to really thank you all for your work, your volunteer work.
The next proclamation is Recognizing Child Abuse Awareness Month. Cherie Peralta of Nurse Family Partnership will accept the proclamation on behalf of the Burnaleo County Home Visiting Work Group. And we have several other groups here this evening and members, if you'd like to also come up. We've got Kathy Sanchez, Carolyn Salazar, Olga Palacios, Dre Montoya, Leona Walk, Francisco Ronquillo, Amelia Cordova, Patty Emmard. And if there's anybody that we missed, please welcome and come on up. And both myself and Council Vice President Harris will be reading this proclamation.
Hello, my name is Cherie Peralta. I'm one of the registered nurses. I work with the Nurse Family Partnership Program. As you mentioned, on behalf of the Burnaleo County Home Visiting Work Group, we accept the proclamation. Nurse Family Partnership and Parents as Teachers are both evidence-based home visiting program provided for the Center for Development and Disability through the University of New Mexico. Nurse Family Partnership is an evidence-based home visiting program for first-time low-income mothers. Nurse Family Partnership focuses on mothers having their first child for two fundamental reasons. First, women going through their first pregnancies have a heightened sense of vulnerability, both physically and socially. That makes them more receptive to offers of help, especially from us nurses. Secondly, nurses have the essential skills to address issues of concern. We are tenacious caregivers. Nurses bring passion and excellence to our nursing practice and professional services. In closing, I'd like to thank you for the proclamation and commend the council for supporting and prioritizing the city's home-based early head start program and the additional services you provide for centers across the city.
Thank you. I know you've got a couple more speakers, but let us go and read the proclamation, and then we will have the other speakers come up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If they'd like to say a few words. That's okay. You don't do this that often. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas the month of April is designated as National Child Abuse Prevention Month and serves as a reminder that all children deserve to grow up in a safe, stable, and caring environment with the supportive services they need to thrive and succeed in life. And whereas child abuse occurs in every social, economic level, across ethnic and cultural lines, within all religious and all levels of education. And whereas research shows that approximately 30 percent of abused and neglected children will later abuse their own children, continuing the horrific cycle of abuse. And whereas the child abuse and neglect can change the child's brain architecture, and those changes can last a lifetime." And, Councillor Harris?
Whereas last year in New Mexico, there were 9,684 substantiated cases of child abuse and neglect, with 2,773 of those cases occurring in Burnaleo County. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed because partnerships among schools, faith-based organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas everyone can help by letting someone know if they suspect child abuse. And whereas together, we need to use our voices against abuse, neglect, and injustice, and pledge to stand up for the rights of children to feel safe and protected. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes April as Child Abuse Awareness Month, and encourages all to take action for kids to have happy and healthy lives.
Thank you. And you've got a couple of other speakers would like to say a few words. We'd like them to come up.
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Dunia Barahona. I'm a senior student at the University of New Mexico. I am studying speech and hearing science. And I'm here today to tell you my experience with two of the home visit programs, Nurse Family Partnership and Parents as Teachers. I became enrolled in the program since I was pregnant of my son. And it helped me to not just get the skills for my son to succeed in his school, but also as a parent and as a person, they gave me the confidence to go back to school and to know that it's okay for a single mother to go back to college and finish and complete head education. So I just wanted to let you know that it impacted our life. And I'll tell you one story that my son told me the other day. He said, "Mom, I just wanted to be like you." And then I said, "Why?" And he said, "Because I wanted to go to your school, and I work hard to go to kindergarten and so I can go to your school." As you know, it takes more than just to go to kindergarten to go to college. But for me, as a parent, it means a lot, because I can see that my son sees me as a model. And that, what I'm giving him, it's the skills that it will help him to become someone who will contribute positively in our society. And I want him to value that education is very important, and it's important for us to succeed in knowing that whatever successfulize you have, it always takes a whole community. And I had that support, and that's why we are doing good. And I am finishing my education this December, thanks to the community that is helping me and is giving me that support. So I wanted to thank you for being here, too. And I wanted to thank both of the programs for being wonderful to us, and then knowing that we will succeed because of them, because of their support.
And what is your son's name?
His name is Mateo. He wants to speak too.
Hi, Mateo.
Hi.
Okay, thank you. We've got one more speaker?
Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. My name is Lillian Hansen, and I work as a parent educator for UNM's CDV Parents as Teachers Program. We serve families and their children prenatally through kindergarten entry. Our vision is that all children will learn, grow, and develop to realize their full potential. Our mission is to promote the optimal learning development, learning, early development, sorry, learning and health of children by supporting and engaging their parents and caregivers, like Dunia. Grounded in the latest research, Parents as Teachers develops curricula that supports a parent's role in promoting school readiness and the healthy development of children. Our approach is intimate and relationship-based. We embrace learning experiences that are relevant and customized for the individual needs of each family and child. As a program, we have touched the lives of hundreds of families, and I have been honored to journey alongside many of them in support of a healthy relationship and healthy child development. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've got one more speaker. Classic is his nickname, is a biker name, but his name is Frank.
First of all, I'd like to thank you all for supporting child abuse and helping us protect our children. I want to express my gratitude to you all and to all of these folks that are doing that, because unfortunately, when they reach us, they're broken. They've been abused. So I hope through your help, all of your help, they put us out of business. That's where we want to be. 2,000 kids that you mentioned, that is unacceptable. Our children are precious, and they are to be protected at all costs. And I'll ask you to always keep in mind, never put a dollar figure of what it takes to protect a child. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be available to answer anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We'd like each and every one of you to come up and accept the proclamation, and thank you for your advocacy and working on behalf of young children and keeping our children safe. Thank you. Again, thank you to our unsung heroes. Thank you very much. Councillor Borrego.
Thank you so much for what you all do in light of the young child that is currently in critical condition, that was abused, that was on the news last night. It's really extra special to have you all here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Borrego. We have another presentation this evening, that is Councillor Peña, regarding the Cruising Task Force. Councillor Peña.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually myself and Councillor Benton. Where is Councillor Benton? He must have stepped out. So we have Jeff here, who's going to do the presentation, and then obviously, we have some task force members. I know we have Lorenzo Otero in the back, and then we have Dave Campbell. Where is he? There you are. So, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Councillor, President Sanchez, and members of the council. I know we have a long agenda ahead of us tonight, so I'll try to keep this pretty succinct. First of all, it's been a pleasure working with the Cruising Task Force. I know that there's a couple of members of the task force who are here tonight, so they might be making some public comment. But first of all, I'd like to just start off by going a little bit through the background. As you know, it was back in December of last year that we, it was Councillor Peña and Councillor Benton who sponsored the resolution to create a task force, charged with the task of exploring opportunities for promoting responsible cruising in the City of Albuquerque. And so if we look at the current, the current cruising and public streets ordinance, it recognizes cruising as a potential threat to the public health, safety, and welfare through the repetitive traffic that kind of ensues around different parts of town. But with the creation of this task force, we have the goal of exploring opportunities for promoting more responsible cruising and setting different standards for cruising behavior. So the task force had a series of six meetings during this time. That was throughout the months of February and March. And during those six meetings, we came up with, there's the document before you guys, it has three different parts. The first is outlining the existing conditions surrounding cruising. The second is recommendations related to legislation, administrative proceedings, kind of thinking a little bit more about the economic development implications behind some of these cruising activities, if possible. So there was, yeah, that's the second part. If you look at the second part, there's six different recommendation areas. And I'm happy to go through some of those if you guys have some more questions related to those recommendations. And the task force, the task force hopes that with the conclusion of this task force, hopefully, there's some ongoing conversation, hopefully, hopefully with, I would say, a quarterly type of meeting they're proposing. They would love to work more closely with the council to identify ways to implement some of these recommendations. And so I'm here to answer any other questions or any other topics related to the task force that you'd like.
Councillor Peña.
Mr. President, I know that was just so brief, Jeff. Thank you. I really appreciate it. You know, you guys put a lot of work into this and a lot of hard work, and there's, and you can see by the report that there was a lot of thought put into it and how we address the issue. In particular, I want to thank Councillor Benton, like I said, you know, it was really imperative that he was a co-sponsor of this, just because most of the cruising that's occurring now is in his district. And of course, you know, we want to make sure that we're responsible and respectful to the neighbors and businesses that are in that area, but with the hopes that, you know, we actually identify other areas of the city where this can occur, you know. And I just really want to thank everybody who took the time and the effort to put all the sweat equity into this. I mean, there was a lot of folks, and I think there's some people here, if you want to stand up real quick, if you're part of the task force. So thank you, gentlemen, and the rest of you, too. I see a bunch of you guys who were part of the extended group as well, and all the members. So stand up if you were part of the task force. So thank you. And we have Eric and Dave here, and I would really, you know, I know we're short on time, but I would really appreciate if Dave could come up and just say a couple of words, Eric and House, if you would just take less than a minute. I know, Councillor Sanchez, we have a long agenda, but you know, there was really a lot of effort put into this. And Councillor Benton, I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
Councillor Benton? Mr. Campbell, go and proceed.
Thank you very much. I didn't prepare anything for this, but I can tell you from my heart that this has been a surprisingly wonderful activity to take part in. I hadn't anticipated really enjoying this, but I have met friends and found out a whole lot about our community that is deserving of celebration, and people who really have pride in the work that they do, the cars that they have, and the activity that goes on with that celebration. So thank you, councillors, for the opportunity to serve. And as has been stated, this probably is the beginning and not the end of this process, and I look forward to continuing with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, thank you very much, councillors. I prepared slightly less than Mr. Campbell did for public comment, but I can just echo his sentiments. I really learned a lot, and I met some great people, House and Joey and Joe, and just really, you know, I've lived in Albuquerque my whole life, but really learned a whole lot about the culture and about how we can all embrace it and really celebrate what is uniquely Albuquerque. And I've found out there's a lot of communities over the country that are actually watching what we're doing right now, to see how we can embrace this, the cruising and the car enthusiast culture. And I think the work that we've done is really a great first step in that. So thank you very much.
Lorenzo Otero, whose nickname is House. Welcome.
It's because I'm little guy. You know, I can honestly say that it's been a blessing to be able to open up the lines of communication between not just the cruisers and the city, but also the businesses and the community in general. Of course, Jeff, we put him in a lowrider last week, and it was kind of cool to watch him go down the street. Honestly, it's a unique opportunity, and just wanted to say thank you for opening up the lines of communication with all of us. I think being able to work together and have that open line of communication, we have nowhere to go but forward. So in that being said, we just, we appreciate you all. There's a lot of us that are here. This is a way of life for us, is like I've always said, it's, cruising to us is like red and green chili to Albuquerque, New Mexico, and to New Mexico in general. It started here. Let's embrace it. Let's come together, and let's just enjoy our culture here in Albuquerque and in New Mexico in general. Thank you guys for this opportunity. We appreciate you guys very, very much.
Mr. Otero, thank you. Councillor Benton, and then Councillor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. Otero. That's a way to, that's a great simile, right? Red chili, green chili, cruising. I mean, it's, this is our city, this is our sense of place, you know? It's the stuff that makes us different from everybody else, and we got to celebrate that. And I'm proud to be a small part of it. I really do want to thank Jeff. Jeff's done a great job. You know, we have a fairly small staff at the council, and sometimes we're criticized for having too many staff and doing this or that, or something that maybe somebody else should be doing instead of us. But I think we have a fine staff on every level, whether it's planning, whether it's our fiscal staff, very professional. And each of us have a policy analyst that helps us navigate and help people navigate city government, because we can't be answering that phone 24/7, but they answer it at least 40 hours a week, probably more. And so Jeff, I do want to single you out for that, but also want to thank my co-sponsor, Councillor Peña. We all recognize, you know, when I first latched on to the bill with her, and I appreciate her including me as part of it, we had discussions about the old days of San Gabriel Park, the whole history of how it's all, you know, it's a moving feast by definition. It's a bunch of cars moving around, so it's a movable feast, and it's had its ups and downs. And we've had some folks who have not, who have kind of latched on to it, who aren't really part of the really great part of it, and they've been more of a negative part of it. And so, you know, we have to recognize that as well, that, and I appreciate all the car clubs being very interested in having a code of conduct, and that we all recognize we're going to basically behave traffic code. It's not that hard to do. It's not that hard to do. So, I really appreciate that, and also the, the folks from the downtown stakeholders who also have got more involved in it, because, you know, it's a big community, and there are people living downtown, and there are people who want to cruise downtown, and, and we're gonna support all of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borrego.
I want to thank Counselor Benton and Counselor Peña for initiating, initiating this effort. It's when we start to break down cultural barriers, and we start learning about each other's integrity and backgrounds and history, that's when we start developing more integrity as a city. And I think, I grew up in Espanola, and I would challenge you guys to say that maybe lowriding started in Espanola, but, you know, we'll, we won't talk about that right now. But, I mean, really, when we start really breaking down those barriers and understanding each other as a people, and that goes for all walks of life, then we start to live happier, and we start to learn about each other, and we start to appreciate each other. So, I truly want to thank Counselor Benton and Counselor Peña for initiating this effort, and I think that in time, maybe there's other cultures that we want to look at as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Counselor Peña.
I'll just end it by, again, reiterating what you said about Jeff. I mean, he just, on top of everything else he's, he does at the, at the council offices, putting this all together and working, I think you had like eight meetings, and, and plus, obviously, went cruising, but, you know, on top of all your other work, so I just want to say that, and, and you, typically, you'll get a nickname, and I think they gave you the nickname of "Truth," right? "Truth." And I'm not sure about Dave and Eric, if they have one yet, but, but I do, I do just want to say that, as Dave Campbell said, though, that this is something that's gonna be, is, is being looked at. You know, we're starting to receive a lot of calls. This is being looked at nationally, because other cities and counties have the same ordinance that shows it as a threat to public health and safety, you know? So, some, I think we're gonna be an example for the rest of the nation once we do this, and we, and we do it right. So, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, councilors. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peña and Counselor Benton. We are now under Item Four, Economic Development Discussions. There is none this evening. Let's move to Item Five, Administrative Question and Answer Period. Councilors, are there any questions for the administration? I have one question from Mr. Rial, and that is in reference to the art project and funding, federal funding. You know, I'm hearing more promising stories in the papers, and I know that several of the councilors went to Washington, DC, and had a chance to also meet with the FTA. Where are we looking, and when will we, we be looking at this funding?
Mr. President, and members of the council, as you all know, the president and the Congress came to an agreement on a, on a budget, and language was inserted in that appropriate or that budget that not only included money for small starts across the country, which was not originally in the president's budget, but was inserted by both the Senate and the House, and signed by the president, but also included language that directed the FTA to move forward with funding projects that had already been approved and have gone through the FTA process. So, we believe that that language is obviously helpful to our project here in Albuquerque, and, and now it really is up to the administration in DC to, to decide on the next steps. We met with the FTA Region Six folks last week, presented all the information we have up to date, and they are submitting the paperwork to DC yet again. I think this is the third reiteration of the project, and we'll be hopeful that at some point, the funding will, will come to pass. So, that's where things are as, as we, as I, as I know of today.
And one more question. Do we have a timeframe? I'm getting asked that question all the time. When will the buses start to run? I know we're still waiting on certification.
Well, on that note, Mr. President, members of the council, just for you all's information, we will have some, at least one or two of the art buses running the corridor this, this week. We're now looking at the timing between the stations, so that we can get our schedules synchronized, if you will, with the equipment, and to see how well the, at least the equipment and the modifications that have been done to the construction side of the project, that it's all working and, and doing well. But, to give you a definite timeline, we're still hoping that, that as we move through the process of having our conversations with the bus company, that we're, that we can give you a date within the next 30 to 45 days for sure as to when that service will start. Obviously, the, the big issue for us is the, is the equipment and, and the issues we've had with, with the quality of the, of the workmanship, et cetera, with the buses. We are scheduled to have more meetings with the company to address those issues, and we're hopeful that once we get that piece of the process completed, we can give you and the citizens of Albuquerque a, a better sense of when we might start service.
Thank you, Mr. Rial. I also want to personally thank Counselor Davis, Counselor Gibson, Counselor Benton, and also Counselor Borrego for meeting with the FTA in Washington, DC. Thank you for your work. Counselor Borrego. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rial, how's the roadway? Are all the improvements on the roadway that was being taken care of?
Mr. President, and Counselor Winter, for the most part, all the construction side of the operation, the, the, the stations, the issues we had with the level boarding for the buses, et cetera, at least 98% of that now has been completed. There are some, some striping issues that still need to be completed, but because of the weather, we have to wait till probably May, when it gets a little warmer, to put the striping down. And, and now they're testing the signals and testing the, the equipment that are actually, it's actually on the platform, the fair box issues and the screens, et cetera. So, for the most part, most of the construction now is, is pretty much almost complete.
And I also want to thank Counselor Harris, who was also in Washington, DC, and had a chance to meet with the FTA. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just so people who are watching or listening or in the chambers know that, yeah, the four councilors did go out and meet with the FTA, that the mayor has met with the FTA, I think, in DC as well as in Dallas, and that the CEO of the bus company is actually here in Albuquerque. So, the, the city's making a lot of efforts to, to get this thing worked out, and we're putting a lot of pressure on the bus companies as well as the FTA. And I'm, I'm confident that, that we are gonna have a, a working, new bus system here in the next several months. One thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Rial, I, I was driving up Central Avenue at night in the rain, and in the daytime, I think the, the new lane configurations are a little challenging, but I think we'll get used to them. A little concerned if we're just gonna run one or two buses up that, you know, up Central Avenue, if people are gonna understand what, what's supposed to happen. But at night in the rain, when you're on Central Avenue, it's really hard to, to see what the lanes are, are doing, and I don't know if you're aware of that, or if you have a way to rectify that.
Mr. President, and Counselor Harris, well, thanks for the feedback. Obviously, it rains so seldom here that sometimes that's a, that's a welcome sight, but you're right, we probably need to make sure we, we review that and see what... We are looking at some additional, if you will, campaign to educate our, our citizens about how to use, if you will, the corridor, because it's very different. Looking at additional safety requirements in the corridor, maybe even delineators to help reflect the light of the cars as you're going through the corridor, but we'll look into that as well.
Counselor Benton.
And I want to thank Mr. Rial for meeting with, with, with one of our key stakeholders in, in the west downtown area where we're, there's redevelopment going on. And I think, President Sanchez, you've mentioned this in the past also, that, that there are some issues, just, these are relatively small fixes and adjustments that can occur on some of the signage and the overhead, the, the way the signage is placed on the overhead mast and, and wayfinding and things like that, so... And I, I appreciate the administration's interest in making sure that, that when the project does, you know, take off and, and actually start operation, that we help people with their understanding of how the system is. And, and I don't know whether, I think, Mr. Rial, that, that you've spoken about this in the past also, that, you know, that we'll have some, some PR information to help people understand how to navigate the corridor.
Counselor Peña.
I wasn't gonna ask anything, but I thought I'd chime in since everyone else was. Just with the rain that happened, I just received a few calls. It just reminded me that the people were kind of lost because they couldn't see the, the striping on the road. Did you get any of those calls?
We did, Counselor, Mr. President, Counselor Peña. And again, it goes really back to the, to the conversation I started with, and that is that the real reflectors, that really are the bright reflectors that will, you know, that will really illuminate the roadway, that has not happened yet, because, again, because of the weather. Starting in May, when it gets warm, it'll adhere. Right now, what we have is paint, and the paint's faded, because, you know, it's been there for a long time. The, the new striping will be much brighter, and, and will help, I think, at least give folks and, and drivers a better sense of where they are in relationship to the lane, so...
That's what happens when I'm not paying attention. You already said it, right?
Thank you, Mr. Rial. Are there any other questions for the administration? See none. Let's move on to Item Number Six. That is the Journal. Council Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the March 19th Journal.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the March 19th Journal. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Item Seven, Communications and Introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Gibson and Winter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R-27 on tonight's agenda for final action. R-27 is requiring pedestrian crossing improvements at or near the intersection of Louisiana Boulevard and Natalie Avenue, and the formation of a task force to study pedestrian improvements at major roadway intersections near primary and secondary schools.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Winter. Any questions? This will require two-thirds votes. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under reports of committee. Counselor Peña.
Thank you. Mr. Pres-
If we could hold off one second and just move approval of the letter of introduction and take a vote.
Need to do that, sir. I move approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introduction. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Okay, let's go back.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Government Operations Committee met on Monday, March 26, 2018, and reports out the following item in the matter of R-7, that it do pass as substituted. I make a motion to accept the committee report.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Harris to accept the committee report. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, March 28, and reports out the following item in the matter of O-11, that it be without recommendation to be heard at the meeting at which it is reported. I make a motion to accept the committee report.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under deferrals and withdrawals. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. In a matter of O-45, amending Chapters One and Two, and to add a new article and a new section, et cetera, I move a deferral until May 7.
We have a motion and a second for deferral until May the 7th of Item O-45. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
My apologies. Can I add one more deferral on that item, please, on the other item we discussed? I, I'd like to make a motion to defer Item R-1811 until May 21st.
We have a motion and a second, and that's deferral until May 21st?
Yes, sir. That's a substandard building, and the planning department and the owner are working towards a resolution, and it's at the planning department's request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for deferral until May the 22nd. Any questions? See none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Okay, we are back on the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Counselor Harris.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That passes unanimously. We are going to move the agenda item around here. We are going to hear, before we go to general public comments, final actions, Item I, Counselor Benton and Jones, that's O-11, followed by Counselor Winter and Counselor Gibson. Item J, that is R-27. So, let's go to Counselor Benton and Counselor Jones first.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Could we let the people know if they wanted to sign up on these two bills in general public comment, but didn't sign up for the bills now? Please let our staff know, and you can speak on these bills.
Correct. And let's go, is there anyone here that was appointed to any of the boards or committees that was on the consent agenda? If you're here, please rise and be recognized. Counselor-
Mr. President, I want to recognize Ms. Megan Ferguson, our new member of the Art, City's Arch Board, District Six.
And also, and I will disclose that my nephew, Jonathan Sanchez, is also on the Arch Board. I don't think he's here this evening, and we've got one, one other individual.
Mr. Damon Maddox, Mr. President, who's our new appointee to the Landmarks and Urban Conservation Commission.
Mr. Maddox, thank you for wanting to serve on the board. Appreciate it. Okay, let's go back to final action. Item I, Counselor Jones and Counselor Benton.
Mr. President.
Go and proceed.
I move it do pass.
Have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones.
Mr. President, we do have a packet of amendments that have been heard at LUPs, and I think it's up to the will of the council whether we want to go ahead and hear these amendments in description before we hear from public comment.
What's the will of the council? Do you want to go ahead and hear the amendments first, or do you want to go to general public comment on these? Okay, let's go and hear the amendments, and who will be presenting? Petro, go and proceed. And for clarification, at the fin, at the LUPs meeting, there was no action taken on any of these items, so these amendments will be voted on this evening. Is that correct?
Good evening, Mr. Presidents and councilors. Yes, that's correct. So, this is the first presentation before the full city council on O-1811, adopting amendments to the Integrated Development Ordinance, also known as the IDO. There were two Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meetings, also known as LUPs, on, one on March 14th and one on March 28th. At both of these meetings, there was a staff presentation and public comment. Tonight, I will be presenting 14 exhibits that amend the IDO in response to matters raised by staff and the public. These amendments seek to improve the IDO and to address errors and omissions identified. However, before I go over the amendments, we will have a short presentation from Ms. Renz Whitmore with the Planning Department on the Community Planning Assessment Areas to address some concerns and questions that were raised during the previous LUPs meeting.
Whitmore, go and proceed.
Thank you. President, councilors, we had a few questions about what is the future of long-range planning in the city of Albuquerque once we embark on this new era post-Integrated development ordinance? And so, I've just put together a couple slides to answer that question. Number one, I won't take us back too far, but I will just say that this is a major transition from our existing system today of multiple standalone items that have a mix of policies and regulations in each, done over the last 40 years, to a new system where all the policies from those standalone documents have been incorporated in the updated comprehensive plan that you all adopted in April of 2017, as well as the Integrated Development Ordinance has pulled over all of the regulations from those standalone documents into the Integrated Development Ordinance. Shannon, next slide. So, the question is, what happens to the rest of the content from those sector development plans? And the community planning area assessments are part of the answer to that. Number one, all of the sector plans in their entirety are now part of the comprehensive plan as Appendix D for historic reference, and the intent and the description in the comprehensive plan is that those sector development plans, the portions of them that are not regulatory and not policy, get turned into the fodder for information about demographics and about projects and about history and the important portions of those communities that aren't regulatory and aren't policy, so that we turn to those sector plan documents as we do the community planning area assessments to help us understand and really flesh out what's unique and wonderful about each of these areas. Next slide. So, we all know that from here, we've got several steps before we embark on that community planning area assessment. Number one, there's time between when you- planning area assessment. Number one, there's time between when you adopted the Integrated Development Ordinance and when it becomes effective to bring forward the amendments that you will look at tonight that Petra is about to present to you. We gave ourselves that six months not only to bring those, to find those amendments and bring them forward, but also to do trainings with staff, with the public, with designers, so that everybody gets a sense of, of the big change that's coming before the May seventeenth effective date. Thereafter, for a year, you all have directed the planning department to help property owners request a zone change that helps them match the land use on their properties with the appropriate zoning category. So we spend the next year focused on that, which will really help us to have our zoning map catch up with, with the new world. And after that year-long process, then it'll be time, believe it or not, for the first annual update of the Integrated Development Ordinance, part of our plan forevermore to keep the zoning code up to date. Once we kind of send those amendments forward, staff gets to concentrate exclusively, the long-range staff at the planning department gets to, gets to really focus on preparing to start the community planning area assessments. We've given ourselves a year, beginning right after that first amendment, next slide, to work, number one, on doing the initial analyses for, for a need assessment, which areas of our community need to, the planning the most. So we have a series of demographic analyses that we need to do. How many variances? How many zone changes have been requested in a particular area? How long it's been since an area got any planning attention? And we put forward a recommendation, the planning department puts forward a recommendation to you all about what order the twelve community planning areas should, should we go forward with. In addition to do, and you all get to make that decision of order, and that'll be in that year between the first IDO amendment and when we actually start the community planning area assessments. The other thing that we need to do is just do the baseline analysis for each of these areas based on the performance measures and the other data descriptions in the comprehensive plan. We need to work with the Office of Neighborhood Coordination to get together an outreach plan. Who do we need to reach out to? Who can help us design what will happen in each of these community planning area assessments so that come June of two thousand and twenty, we're ready to hit the ground running, both with templates, with the baseline information that we can take out to the communities, and we're ready to work in each of those areas to tailor the rest of the process to the issues most important to the communities in each area. Next slide. In general, those community planning area assessments are really focused on generating recommendations about policy changes, generating recommendations about regulatory changes, and anything else that that community needs that the city can help with will be recommendations for projects, let's say, or capital improvement spending, so that we, we, with the community, long-range planners spending four months at a time in each of these areas, we spend time doing surveys. We spend time walking certain neighborhoods, finding out about the character that the, that that community values, the historic areas that they would like to keep and protect. We also talk about just baseline trends, what's been happening, what they want to see more of, what they want to see less of, and generating recommendations to capitalize on those opportunities. Those recommendations make their way on an annual basis, if they're regulatory, into the updates for the Integrated Development Ordinance. If it's a five-year, sorry, if it's a policy, then it becomes part of the five-year updates to the comprehensive plan. And anything else that's just a recommendation for, let's say, parks and open space, how to do a better job picking up a park, can be directly generated with that department as well as handed over at the end of the assessment process. Next slide. So as we generate those recommendations with the community, we need to analyze what, what to do with a really good idea. If it's such a good idea and such a best practice, then it really should be extended citywide. It shouldn't just be a rule for that area. It should become the new citywide rule. So number one, if it's a great idea, maybe it's a great idea for everybody. Number two, if it's an idea that really is unique to a particular area, then we could bring it into the Integrated Development Ordinance as a small area rule, a rule that only applies to that unique place. And lastly, if it's an idea that isn't necessarily regulatory, we have the option of bringing it into the comprehensive plan as a policy, or by recommending a project that can address the issue that the community is raising. Next slide. In the Integrated Development Ordinance itself, we have many different tools that can, that can be tailored for small areas. So not only do you have overlay zones, either a character protection overlay zone, a historic protection overlay zone, or a view protection overlay zone, you also have use-specific standards in Part Four of the IDO. You also have development standards in Part Five that can be a different standard for a small map, or in Part Six for administration and enforcement that can be tailored for a particular community. All of these now exist in terms of the rules that have been carried over from the sector development plans, and they've been mapped on the interactive map so that it makes it more transparent and easier for us to enforce those rules and help protect those small areas, and that will continue moving forward. Next slide. In the comprehensive plan itself, we have also opportunities to put tailored information from each of these community planning area assessments. Not only the Community Identity Chapter itself, which is designed to capture these policies for each community planning area, but also the Implementation Chapter and the Performance Measures that are described in Chapter fourteen as well. Next slide. So going forward, we have a seamless, ongoing, proactive system where we're generating recommendations throughout the city in each community planning area in turn, and then generating those recommendations that can roll in to the programmed cycle of updates on an annual basis for the Integrated Development Ordinance, and then the five-year basis for any policy recommendations to go into the comprehensive plan. And with that, I pass it back to Petra.
Petra, do you want to go and proceed with the amendments?
Mr. President, Counselors, yes. So, as I go through a short summary of each of the fourteen exhibits before us this evening, you will note that they will reference Exhibit A. Exhibit A is the IDO, as adopted in November two thousand and seventeen. And for the public, copies of all the amendments are available in hard copy at the staff table outside of chambers, so everyone can follow along with us. Exhibit one contains a spreadsheet of technical corrections to the IDO. The corrections were identified by the public and city staff during the outreach after the IDO was adopted in November. This spreadsheet was presented at the previous LUPs meeting. It has been revised to reflect questions and comments from Counselors and the public. In addition, the source of the amendments has been added as an additional column to the spreadsheet. The revisions are in blue and green text. The blue text reflects changes that were made between March twen- March fourteenth and March twenty-eighth LUPs meetings, and the green text reflects changes made since the March twenty-eighth LUPs. This revised version was provided to the public on March thirtieth. Exhibit two is an amendment to the sign regulations. This amendment would allow rooftop signs as a type of allowable signage within the boundaries of the East Downtown, also known as EDO, character protection overlay, and the historic protection overlay. This amendment has not been revised since the March fourteenth LUPs meeting. Exhibit three addresses application fees. Application fees for different application types are set by several different sections of the Code of Ordinances. These are incorporated into the IDO. This exhibit carries forward fees established today. This amendment has been revised since the March fourteenth LUPs meeting. Revisions are in blue text. The revisions correct citations and the type of wireless telecommunications facility that the fee applies to. This revised version was provided to the public on March twenty-third. Exhibit four revises language associated with the sign regulations. The intent of this exhibit is to bring the sign regulations and standards that apply citywide closer to how signs are regulated in the zoning code today. The amendment to the sign regulations does not add or change any existing regulations related to signs. This amendment was revised after the March twenty-eighth LUPs in response to public comments at LUPs. These revisions are in green text. This revised version was provided to the public on March thirtieth. Exhibit five addresses front yard parking. This amendment seeks to clarify the language from the two thousand and seven amendment, as carried over into the IDO, and to ensure that the language is enforceable and that the intent of the two thousand and seven amendment is furthered. This amendment has been revised since the March fourteenth LUPs meeting to add citations and to correct the review and approval body for requests for variances to front yard parking. All variances to the access and connectivity section of the IDO are reviewed and approved by the Development Review Board. These changes are reflected in the blue text. This revised version was provided to the public on March twenty-third. Exhibit six makes revisions to the Coors view protection overlay and the Coors character protection overlay. These changes seek to clarify and reinforce protections from the Coors corridor plan as they are translated into the IDO. This amendment was produced since the March fourteenth LUPs in response to public comment and was provided to the public on March twenty-third. Exhibit seven makes revisions to the residential zone district standards in terms of the percentage of the front facade that can provide, can comprise a garage door. This amendment was produced since the March fourteenth LUPs in response to public comment and was provided to the public on March twenty-third. Exhibit eight adds a new character protection overlay to the North I twenty-five Sector Development Plan area. This character protection overlay will carry over additional development standards from the North I twenty-five Sector Development Plan. This amendment was produced since the March fourteenth LUPs in response to public comment and was provided to the public on March twenty-third. Exhibit nine amends how the height of flat-roofed buildings are measured, adding a parapet as part of the measurement for height. This amendment was produced since the March fourteenth LUPs in response to public comment and was provided to the public on March twenty-third. Exhibit ten adds a posted sign to the notification process for site plan administrative. This is in addition to email notice to the affected neighborhood association. This seeks to address concerns about notice in areas where there is no neighborhood association for residents who are not involved in the neighborhood association, or the neighborhood association is not active. This amendment was produced since the March fourteenth LUPs in response to public comment and was provided to the public on March twenty-third. Exhibit eleven carries over the height of forty feet for properties zoned RML and MXT in the downtown neighborhood area, character protection overlay. These heights are established by the downtown neighborhood area Sector Development Plan for properties zoned SU two DNA MR and SU two DNA OR, the zones that will convert to RML and MXT. This amendment is in response to public comments and was first presented to the public on March twenty-eighth. Exhibit twelve proposes to allow decorative lighting of buildings in the downtown center, uptown center, and employment centers. In general, this is where there is a character of taller buildings. These buildings are often lit decoratively. Such lighting would be required to project downwards, but would be mounted to light the entire building. The IDO proposes that decorative lighting in the rest of the city be mounted at fifteen feet in height. This exhibit was provided to the public on March thirtieth. Exhibit thirteen proposes to make heavy vehicle equipment sales, rental, fueling, and repair a conditional use within three hundred and thirty feet of a residential zone. This amendment seeks to recognize the potential impacts of such a use in proximity to residentially zoned properties and is in response to the community. This exhibit was provided to the public on March thirtieth. Exhibit fourteen revises the original legislation to allow for additional amendments beyond the first five amendments. The committee amendment was produced since the March fourteenth LUPs and was provided to the public on March twenty-third. And this, I'm sure you'll be pleased to hear, is the last slide of the presentation, and this outlines the future steps for the IDO. Ms. Schultz, Mr. Melendez, Ms. Renz Whitmore, and the planning department, and I are all available to address any questions or clarifications that you may have.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and go to general public comments before we vote on any of these amendments. I will call the first six speakers up, and there is seating available for you in the front. Please be prepared to come to the front, have a seat, and be prepared to speak. The first speaker is E. Ward, John Garcia, Scott Shibor, Stephanie Landry, Nick, and Mackenzie Bishop. Dr. Ward, go and proceed. Welcome.
Are you sure you have the general public comment? What is the not the amendments?
I've got O dash eighteen dash eleven.
Okay, then that's not general public comment.
We are not in general public comment. We are on the bill.
Okay.
So you're fine.
Thank you. Mr. President, Counselors, not quite ready because I wasn't expecting this. But with regard to the specific amendments and exhibits, support the front yard parking, Exhibit Five, for the most part, or generally support Exhibit Six for the Coors corridor. There's just, there's still, I think, some concern about the color issue and the converting all of the recommendations, the shoulds and everything, to stronger language in the IDO, just, just with regard to the color aspect. So I'm hoping that this will pass with allowance for some more tweaking of that particular issue with regard to the overlays. Support Exhibit Nine, building height. The parapet should be included. That affects multiple areas, including the west side in the Coors area. Support Exhibit Ten, development notification. We believe we've had an issue in the past with lack of notification, even with neighborhoods when we're supposed to be notified and not being notified, and an issue or a project being discovered because someone saw a sign. So please do that. Heavy vehicle fueling, support that, please, because there are issues in town, and especially, well, I'm, I do think there should be someone looking into, since at the last administration, sort of the very last few weeks, the permit process was waived for gas stations and stuff, a bad thing for the environment. And how, is there any relationship with that? How is this meaningful? Da, 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 et cetera, et cetera. So if someone could clarify that, if there's someone here could address that. Thank you very much. Bye.
John Garcia, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, my name is John Garcia, Executive Vice President, Home Builders Association of Central New Mexico. My concern is about Exhibit Seven. We, there was no time for us to review this, these amendments. We got them at about two o'clock this afternoon. We do appreciate getting them. It was not heard at LUPs either, this Exhibit Seven. We were working with, good faith with the city and the council staff on three issues: entitlements concerning grandfathering existing projects in development, five, five-foot setbacks on garages, and definitions of garages as a percentage of the facade. In the draft preliminary IDO, this language did not exist. The language that was adopted has significant impact on new product. The impact is this: one, the cost would increase up to twenty percent. That would have dramatic effect on affordability. Number two, it would be forced to build a product that nobody wants because they would limit two-car garages on a narrow lot. And number three, it opens the city to legal challenges from developments already planned and under construction. And I know that was addressed in part of the amendments that, that we looked at late this afternoon. Although we have a voice, we do not have a vote. We don't support Exhibit Seven, as written. We submitted, recommended changes to Counselor Benton and Jones, albeit late, about fifteen minutes after we got the amendments this afternoon. We hope to resolve these issues so we can all move forward with the new IDO. Lastly, I just want to thank Counselor Benton and Jones, along with the city and council staff, who've done a great work on the IDO. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Scott Shibor? Welcome.
Thank you, Counselors. My name's Scott Shiber. I'm president of Scott Patrick Homes. I just, I don't support the amendment. I don't believe it goes far enough. It, right now, the way the garage rule is written, it will devastate building in Albuquerque. It will drive up the costs on all building, especially affordable housing, by ten to twenty percent. Projects, I was working on one in the Projects, I was working on one in the southwest heights, 450 affordable lots, that will be stopped immediately. Subdivisions that are existing, half-built and done, will have to stop and redesign product and have to market product they were not designed for, slowing down sales and having devastating financial impacts on the builders and the millions of dollars they've invested. We need to have rules for existing subdivisions where you can build under the rules that they were built under. If not, there'll be tremendous loss to us. Albuquerque's building will immediately be reduced. Over the next two years, it'll fall further. People will go to Burnley County, Rio Rancho, Los Lunas, where they can build the product that the people want at an affordable cost. This is a devastating rule to the home building industry. It needs to be talked about more and negotiated to where it can achieve the best results for all of us. It will devastate home building. Mark Millers.
There's a question for you, sir?
Yes.
Councilor Benton.
Mr. Shibor, did, so were you not aware of the schedule for adoption of the IDO or your organization?
Yes, we were.
You were?
The organization.
And so now you're here near the entire end of the process and saying that this doesn't work for your industry? I mean, there was months and months and months of time to be doing, to having this discussion. And, and I, I find that, that a supposedly professional industry would have been on top of this, and, and it's shocking to hear it being a problem now. I would also just say that, that, you know, the idea that only one sort of thing, only one sort of approach to, to greenfield development, and that's mostly what we're talking about here, because we already offered to solve the problem for infill development, and, you know, that wasn't good enough, so we'll have to continue. But I think Councilor Jones and I remain available to talk about this, but it's really disappointing to have it coming at this late date.
Well, we believe Mr. Garcia from the Home Builders Association was talking for months with planning about this and just did not get to a resolution.
I'm just saying, of course.
Sure, I know it's late.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Nick, and Mackenzie Bishop, welcome.
Mr. President, councilors, I'm Stephanie Landry from Landry and Ludwig, and I represent D.R. Horton, Inc., who is a production builder here in town, one of the largest production builders who has significant amount of permits issued on a yearly basis. I wanted to address specifically Councilor Benton's question with respect to why these issues haven't been brought up.
Can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I wanted to address Councilor Benton's question about why some of these issues hadn't been brought up. And we have issues particularly in connection with production building and the applicability of which development standards apply when there has been plat approval. We have raised this recently with respect to staff because the issue has come up in the current permitting process. Prior to that time, it was our understanding that the development standards in place at the time of preliminary plat approval would be the ones that applied, and we based that on the city ordinance itself. So this is a new issue that's coming up, and it was not brought to our attention before this time that the city may be taking the position that these new development standards apply. When we subdivide the properties, we base that subdivision and the placement of utilities and also the lot pads based on the current standards in place. So this is one of the issues that we would like to have time to work with the councilors and the staff with respect to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Councilor Benton.
Just to clarify once again, this issue of existing platted areas, you know, has already been offered and will continue to work with these files.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nick, followed by Mackenzie Bishop.
I'm sorry to also ask, is there still going to be a general discussion time or is this is the one time?
This is the one right now, on the bill. Correct.
This is general discussion?
That is correct.
And then the one for the amendments?
This is it, right now, for the amendments.
I'm sorry, I was told there was going to be two opportunities to talk. Is there just?
Well, you can speak under general public comments, but the bill will have passed or failed at that time. But this is on the bill and on the amendments. So go and proceed.
Council President, councilors, I know from attending all these meetings that many people, private citizens, spend quite a lot of their time reviewing very carefully the latest proposed amendments. One pair of eyes is just not going to be able to do it, and I am thankful to all of those who do. I know from attending all these meetings that the city's planning staff and the city council's planners took, look over this document and pretty much know it inside out, responding to our queries and concerns, either with a page and section number, or I will get back to you with an answer, and they do, or even more thoughtfully with it requires a change. They should be updated, changed, thus this latest package of amendments. With all the fears and concerns and mistrust we carry from years past, this effort has shown me the weekly, if not daily, concern that these professionals have for our city, our neighborhoods, and our communities. We have all agreed that this IDO document is a living document, and this meeting is proof of that. Please pass the amendments, knowing that there will be more, many more, as it should be as time goes by. For the well-being of our community, Santa Barbara Martinez Town in particular, please do not vote to delay the IDO any, any longer, pass the amendments. Our old historical, primarily residential, with at-home businesses, community depends on you passing the IDO and the amendments, making it a reality and allowing us to finally have real enforceable protections for our neighborhood. Thank you all for your commitment to our county, city, and neighborhoods.
Thanks for your time. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President and fellow members of the council. My name is Mackenzie Bishop, co-owner of Abrazo Homes, a locally-owned home builder employing more than 25 New Mexicans. I'm also the Chair of the Production Builders Council of the HBA, whose members represent more than 75% of Albuquerque's new home permit volume. In the past two weeks, we have engaged with city staff in a collaborative and open-minded manner to work through a few major technical issues, which, among other things, will dramatically affect our ability to provide affordable homes for the Albuquerque market. Unfortunately, exhibit seven does not properly address our industry's ability to offer the Albuquerque market attainable and desirable product offerings. At 2:00 PM this afternoon, we finally received draft amendments from the city staff, which intended to address some of our concerns. With the incredibly late notice, we were unable to fully vet the proposed language, and as a result, that language isn't being contemplated this evening. Since then, we have provided language to council that we believe honors the spirit of the IDO while facilitating our ability to offer quality, affordable homes in great communities to every citizen of Albuquerque. We strongly encourage all of the council to work with our industry to build a better Albuquerque that everyone can afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Benton.
Yeah, I would just point out, Mr. President, to be really clear to everyone, a large part of our community cannot afford to buy your houses or the way you want to build them or the way anyone else wants to build them. Many of our community is really faced with a burden of their income versus their ability to buy a house. So, so let's watch the rhetoric and the discussion about, well, everybody's going to be able to buy a house if they desire them the way you want. That's not the case.
Councilor Benton.
Sir, who do you represent? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So I am the, one of the co-owners, one of two owners of Abrazo Homes. So we're the largest locally-owned builder in Albuquerque, and I'm also the Chair of the Production Builders Council for the Home Builders Association.
Thank you. Okay, the next five speakers will be Jackie Fishman, Pat Gallagher. Before we go to that, Councilor Jones, do you have a comment?
I do. And I'm sorry to bring it in now, but it's my understanding that we, we council attempted to work with these people, with the, with the group, with the builders, and, and come up with some ideas on how we could work with this and everything that they were, those ideas were rejected. Can someone tell me if, I guess Mr. Garcia would have to answer that, or staff?
Mr. Garcia.
Madam President, Councilor Jones, we, we were given a draft of some of the amendments this afternoon. Petra gave it, gave them to us. We looked them over, and they were, they were not acceptable. So we, we actually responded with language that, you know, we thought would be a good compromise, and I don't think it's been heard yet. So I don't think, I sent it to you and Councilor Benton already and your staff, so hopefully you have it and you can see it. We'd love to be able to work through the, the issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Okay, let's go back to our speakers: Jackie Fishman, Pat Gallagher, Lou Gibney, Brian Ernest, and the last speaker will be Kathy Adams. Once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President and councilors. My name is Jackie Fishman. I'm here on behalf of Legacy Hospitality, who owns a property at the northeast corner of Alameda and San Pedro. I spoke last, last week at the LUPs hearing, and I just wanted to come again and, and talk about the fact that we just learned last week about the North I-25 CPO adoption, and we've been working on this project at the northeast corner for the last, I don't know, six, seven, eight months with idea, relying on, on the current version of the IDO that didn't carry through the, the building height restrictions. And so I was, just wanted to urge the, the council to consider either nixing the, the height restrictions or nixing them on the east side and keeping them on the west side, where around Bloom Fiesta Park, where I think is most appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, councilors, my name is Pat Gallagher. I represent La Luz on the west side. For the sake of preserving our treasured city character, the spectacular views of the river, the mountains, and the bosque on the west side, please vote for the amendment, exhibit number six and nine. These are both slightly technical, especially number six, and they simplify the language that allows us to analyze developments accurately and repeatably. Without this amendment, the IDO will undo the progress we have made over the last many, many years trying to preserve views on the west side. Also, in the one year that we have before a, before it comes back for review again, all of the remaining view properties that could obstruct views will on the west side. So I would say we have to be a little bit tighter on the, at the outset. Otherwise, we will lose everything before the planning ever gets around to reviewing what they've done. And the color issue in this amendment, as M. Ward pointed out, is confusing. It conflicts in the two different documents in here. One, in the matrix, it says one thing about color, and in the amendment, it says something else. And I think we would prefer what it says in the matrix, if we could. Anyway, thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Lou Gibney.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name's Lou Gibney. I'm the Operations Manager for D.R. Horton Homes. I wanted to come and thank you tonight for your efforts on the IDO. I think it's, you know, it's been a lot of work that you guys have gone through. Unfortunately, this afternoon, we were presented with some amendments that fell short of what we as a group and the industry need. And so in looking at that, it's what we need to build affordable homes in Albuquerque. D.R. Horton builds many different types of homes, from high-end homes down to our Express brand homes in the southwest, which are designed to, to fit that need. We have a, a system where people can join the Home Builders Club and build their credit up so that then they can afford to build one of these homes. With adding three to four many thousand dollars to, to the cost of the home, that's going to knock a lot of the people in that area of town out of the market. We build those affordable homes in Rio Rancho and Los Lunas, and it's just going to be unfortunate that we won't be able to build those in Albuquerque. Thank you.
Councilor Benton has a question or comment?
Sir, yeah. So, so what's going to add three or $4,000 to the cost of each home?
Redesigning the homes, bringing them forward.
Redesigning them. So, so redesigning their product, you're saying that, that for you to redesign your specific products, which is, you know, by the way, as an architect and a home designer myself, it's not rocket science to redesign a home, all right? But, but you, I understand that, that the industry has a large portfolio of, of home products, so to speak, and that's what you're talking about. So the cost of redesigning a home is, you know, as far as I know, is $4,000 one time, not $4,000 per buyer.
No, sir. There's a cost that goes into putting that square footage to the front of the home. When you add that square footage to the home, it prices them out of the market.
Explain to me how that cost calculates. The same garage, the same living room, the same everything, you're saying there's a $4,000 cost to a home?
The pad does not allow you to come forward a bit, so we'd have to overX the pads and re-engineer the pads. There's many different things that go into this, sir.
Okay, I, I realize that this code would require the industry to build something other than what it's been building for the last 60 years, which I would venture has not always served our city very well. So I just want to make that point. I need no, no.
Or we could build it somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Ernest.
Good evening, Council President and councilors. I will not continue beating the same horse we have been. Would just like to state that the, some of the major language at issue for us didn't actually exist in the first draft of the IDO that we received back in July. Specifically, the low-density residential development, five-feet-behind-front façade of primary building may not comprise more than 50% of the width of the front facade in reference to garages, did not exist in the first draft that we received. Had it been there, we would have been here then as well, reiterating these same statements. So I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ernest. And the last speaker under the public comments section of this bill is Kathy Adams.
I apologize for my lack of preparedness. There was a little bit of confusion about whether we were signing up for amendments or if we were signing up for public comments, so I apologize. I guess first I need to take the time to thank you all for the time and effort that you're spending, and I want to let you know that the conversations we're hearing are really valuable to us. It's been a steep learning curve for us ordinary citizens to begin to access the information, and we're learning. And it really helps us to hear the public, to hear your conversation and to hear other public comments. I am in support of the effort and time that the amendments tonight represent on the part of ordinary citizens, specifically those of us who were, have worked on the Coors corridor plan and are really vested in protecting the views of the bosque and of the mountains. And I just want to thank you for your time in reading these, and I hope that we will continue to work on more amendments that will improve the product of the IDO. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Okay, we are back on the bill, and we are under amendments. This would be exhibit one, and that would be floor amendment number one, and I will turn that over to Councilor Jones.
Getting there. Give me a second. Let me ask, let me ask one question before I'm, while I'm looking at that. And that question is to staff, will we have the, will, will the people who are concerned at this point in the game, if this passes and they don't like it, will they have more means to come in and work on this issue? And can we do it after we pa, if we should pass these, or this one, or others? Can they, can people always come in and address their, their own particular properties?
Petra, go and proceed.
Mr. President, Councilor Jones, there are a couple of relief mechanisms available. If the, the concern is specific to a property and meets the variance criteria, there is a variance process. There are also options to change zoning. There are the annual IDO updates to the IDO. And in addition, you know, councilors... And in addition, you know, counselors can seek to address issues as they see fit, as they are a legislative body.
Mr. President, if I may?
Go ahead and proceed.
So, this is basically a...these documents are always adjustable if they come up with a good compromise and people are willing to do it. McKenna? I'm sorry.
Mr. President, Counselor Jones, I just wanted to offer two more things. One is...one of the important things that we've said all along is that we'd like to gather up any amendments that are needed so that it goes through...so that the Integrated Development Ordinance goes through a transparent, predictable update schedule, which would next be July of 2019. In the interim, there are a couple of measures that each person who has a plat or a site plan for subdivision could take to get their site plan for subdivision amended to include the models that they would be using in each subdivision that would ensure that they could use those models despite the residential garage standards in the Integrated Development Ordinance. So, there would be the citywide chance to look at it during that annual update process, but individually, those subdivisions could come in for an amendment that would give their models...basically grandfather their models in the interim.
Thank you. Thank you, McKenna.
Counselor Jones, go ahead and proceed.
I will. So, Exhibit one is simply technical edits. It's things that we found in the IDO that needed to be moved to a different position or that it does not change the effect or the...of any of the workings of the IDO. It is simply making it easier to read and putting things in the right spot. So, I'd like to move approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve floor amendment number one to Exhibit one to O-18-11. Counselor Benton?
Just to clarify the motion from Counselor Jones, so this would be for all 14 of these exhibits?
No, this is number one, exhibit number one.
Oh, so we're going to go one at a time?
Counselor Benton, I think we need to go one by one.
Okay.
So, this is just Exhibit one.
Right, so we're...did we determine that we can't do these en masse?
Correct.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, you certainly can do them en masse, but if there's going to be discussion on individual amendments, it may be clear to go through one by one.
I would just...I personally would suggest that we consider removing Exhibits one through six and nine through 14, since there seemed to be some disagreement about seven and eight. And that way, we could just make more quick work of it.
If I may, Mr. President, is there not also something in Exhibit 11?
Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually have questions on a few of the different exhibits.
Okay, fine.
Pat's case, let's go through each one of them. We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That passed unanimously. We are now under Exhibit two, and that would be amendment number two. That's Counselor Benton. We have a motion and a second for floor amendment number two to Exhibit eight to O-18-11. Counselor Borrego?
Mr. Chair, could the staff clarify CPO and HPO? The historic preservation area, and what is CPO? Remind me, please.
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, the CPO means the character protection overlay, and the HPO means the historic protection overlay.
So, these are the new areas that are within the IDO, right? They're not existing?
So, the IDO today has an urban conservation overlay zone, and the historic properties are being converted into the HPO, and the nonhistoric properties are going into the CPO. And so, this amendment covers the boundaries of today's urban conservation overlay zone, but the amendment refers to both the CPO and the HPO because it's being broken up into those two portions.
So, generally speaking, what are those areas? Where do they exist?
It is Central Avenue from the freeway to just before Broadway, and then Broadway from Martin Luther King to Cole, I believe. And it's properties that are one block in on each of those roadways. It's the boundaries of today's urban...IDO, urban conservation overlay zone.
Does that include Old Town?
It does not include Old Town, though.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for amendment number two? See none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Exhibit number three. That would be amendment number three. Counselor Jones?
Thank you. This Exhibit three adds a table of fees for various applications related to land use and zoning. Move approval?
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton for amendment number three. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That passed unanimously. We are now under Exhibit number four. That would be amendment number four. Counselor Jones?
Thank you. This exhibit seeks to revise some language throughout the IDO as it relates to sign regulations, just make it more clear and readable. So, move approval.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton for amendment number four to Exhibit one to O-18-11. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Exhibit five, which would be amendment number five, and that is Counselor Jones.
Mr. President, haven't I been busy? This is the front yard parking issue that we've been working with now since...for decades, and this clarifies it. It makes it more enforceable by our code enforcement people, and I think almost everyone is content with this and happy with it. So, move approval.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Benton. Counselor Penya?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I guess maybe Petra or Shanna. So, can you clarify for me, so what about properties...existing properties? Are they grandfathered in?
Mr. President, Counselor Penya, that is at the heart of this amendment. So, the 2007 amendment addressed front yard parking and said what sort of surface you can park on and the size of that surface. The challenge between 2007 and today is that it wasn't really clear about what happened to those properties before 2007. And so, what this amendment does is it clarifies the intent of their original task force, and it says if you have a property and you've made entitlement...you've improved based on those entitlements before 2007, so if you have an area that is improved, that is larger than is allowed today, you get to keep those. It's unrealistic for us to expect people to...or unfair, I should say, to remove those improvements that they've made, that they had a right to make at the time. It also says if you had a house that was developed before we had any rules, it is also unfair of us to expect you to spend a lot of money on improving something that wasn't required when your home was developed. So, this would be for properties that predate zoning, where there was no driveway required. But what it does clarify is that the only place you can park is on an improved surface, or in the case of the home that predates zoning, that in an area equivalent to that improved surface. And so, it clarifies that you can't just park everywhere on the front of your property, that it has to be within a defined area and those improvements.
So, even on existing properties, you have a working family, they have a small house, small front yard, they don't have much off-street parking, they park...try to fit both their cars on the property? That's a violation now?
Mr. President, Counselor Penya, if the property has improvements that they have already made and invested in, they can continue to use those improvements. If it's an investment that they wish to make now, there is a variance process written into this where they can seek relief from the language in here. So, an example like that, they would have an opportunity to request a variance, perhaps if they didn't have any on-street parking. You know, some streets have a lot of curb cuts, and so, there is no on-street parking available, and that would be an example of something where somebody could seek a variance to the requirements.
So, if they park there now on gravel, zero scape, then it's a violation?
Mr. President, Counselor Penya, yes, that is what the code says today, and that's what this amendment is carrying over, is that you cannot park on landscaped areas.
I see the desire for the change. It just concerns me, again, like I said, when you have, you know, working-class families who currently have a small piece of property, and, you know, they don't necessarily have the money to pay to improve the area, to put cement. Now, we're going to just really be citing people that really don't have the resources to be able to make these improvements, if you will. I mean, it's, you know, for me, I just have concern, and I won't be supporting this.
Counselor Benton?
Yeah, just to clarify, the...this amendment does...and maybe the original IDO made some distinction between landscaping gravel and pressure fines pavement, which is much less expensive than concrete. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, yes, the IDO gives you the option of either concrete or a base course of gravel that can be provided as the improved surface on which to park.
Right, so, just to be clear, I mean, that's a big discount versus paving asphalt or concrete.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, yes, that's correct. And also, Counselor Penya, to go back to your question about asking people to improve an area, that's part of this amendment, says if your home predates zoning, we are not going to require you to make that improved area. We're just limiting the amount of the front yard that you can park in. So, the entire front yard can't be used for parking. It would just be a limited area of it.
Counselor Penya, and then Counselor Borrego.
So, Mr. President, you know, I have a few areas in the actual neighborhood that I live in. It's probably, you know, the school is 100% free reduced lunch in the neighborhood that I live in, and we have some houses that were built. There's a couple of...they're the Habitat for Humanity homes, and when they built them, they built just really an area to put one car in, and some of them have converted their garages into living space. And so...and they're townhomes, and they basically abut each other. The yard is so small, there's no off-street parking. I mean, it's just real unfortunate, and this is pre...after the date that you're suggesting. So, you know, I really have concern for that in my district, and I hope that, you know, some of the other councils really pay attention to that. Again, like I say, I understand the desire to do that, and the way it looks, I mean, I don't like the way it looks, but, you know, these people are just trying to make ends meet, and they have their home. So, thank you.
Counselor Borrego?
Mr. Chair, Counselors, I'd like to ask the staff to tell me exactly what the date is of pre-existing zoning. Is that 1957? Because that's when the zoning code was adopted. Is that what you're talking about?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, I believe it is 1959.
59?
Yes, so that's...it's...the date is...
Sorry, I was born in 57.
Yeah. It's, yeah, 1959. That's the date that I was referring to.
Okay, my issue with this, and I guess the question that I have, what is the development standard for roads in subdivisions? It's 36 feet? Is that correct, or something like that, in the development process manual? Russell, do you know? I think it's 36 feet. And a lot of subdivisions are built with less than that for the streets. What is...what is it? Do you know?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, it varies about what kind of street it is, but I know that some...
A residential subdivision?
Many of them are 22 feet, between 22 and 36, I would say, but probably closer...more typically closer to the 22 feet.
So, 22 feet on a residential street, and we're...typically, we have a single-family home where there's maybe two, you know, two partners and maybe a couple of kids. So, we're talking maybe three cars, three or four cars, maybe? And I'm just trying to, in my mind, understand how, when a developer comes in and they look at a piece of property and they decide, okay, I'm going to subdivide that, and I'm going to meet the development standards, and I'm going to build a 22-foot road, and then now we're telling...further telling them that they can't park on the...in their driveway. They have two...maybe two spaces within their driveway, but now it's illegal even to park on the road because if you try to pass on a 22-foot subdivision street, you're having problems, especially if people are parked on the sidewalk. If they have a visitor come and see them, usually they do park on the sidewalk, or they park on the street. So, I guess, you know, my concern with this amendment is that we sort of can't have it both ways, because either we build subdivisions that have adequate street access, or we, you know, and which means that there's less property for maybe 30 homes or whatever that, you know, is figured into that configuration. So, I guess what my concern is, is that we're sort of, you know, allowing these streets to be more and more narrow. We're also restricting parking. I understand that we want to encourage transit. I understand that. But unfortunately, until we have a really good transit system for Albuquerque, you know, it seems to me like we're going to have some problems. So, I...I'm having difficulty wanting to support this amendment because I think that when, you know, when a develop...either you're going to get less houses in that subdivision because you're going to provide more available parking, or you're going to encourage transit, which I hope that we do in the future. I know Counselor Benton is very interested in doing that, and we need a really good system. But until we get there, we're restricting...we're restricting the number of...especially in the older neighborhoods, we're restricting the number of people that can park at that home.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think that...I think maybe the intent...I don't think maybe, I do know. The intent of this amendment is to stop people from parking in their front yards on the grass or dirt. The intent of this has nothing to do with transit. The intent of this is to make our neighborhoods look...and the people who live next to the people who have five cars parked in a yard, we need to get control of this. There's only one way to get control of this, and that's to form, to do an amendment and to make this citywide. However, the homes that were built prior to 1970 do have an ability to park without a finished parking area, but it has to have pressure fines, and it can't be dirt, it can't be grass. That is the only change that's being made for the homes before 1970, which are, in fact, the ones that are probably the most distressed and the most in need. We have homes where people are parking five and six cars in a front yard, in the driveway, on the grass, which no longer exists because they've parked on it, and we are looking like slums. And this is not the city that we want to present. We need for people to comply, and I know there are people who are in poorer areas who are this situation, but if we change it, it changes it for the entire city, not just those areas. So, maybe if we say that if you're...I don't know how we fix it, but this is an attempt to make the city a more attractive and more desirable area and make neighborhoods more desirable. So, and I'm sorry, Counselor Borrego, I don't think it has anything to do with the transit system, because we're never going to get the transit on all those little streets, but thank you.
Are there any other questions on amendment number five? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed?
No.
That carries on a seven or two vote. We are now on Exhibit number six, and that is floor amendment number six to O-...to Exhibit one to O-18-11. And basically, I am sponsoring this bill, and this is an amendment that proposes to change the Coors View Protection Overlay Zone to clarify and reinforce protections related to views of the sand dunes. As some of the speakers stated earlier, this is one of the most valuable areas in our community, and I think it's critical and important that we protect the view corridors in those areas. And I'd like to ask Petra one question regarding the previous bill that was in place. This does reflect what has been done in the past. Is that correct?
Mr. President, yes. This builds on the language which is in the IDO as adopted. This clarifies language in the VPO, the View Protection Overlay, and the Character Protection Overlay, the CPO.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Benton?
Mr. President, thank you for... Mr. President, thank you for putting forward this amendment, and I think it is important. I heard some of the speakers speak about color. I heard, I heard some comments about color question with regard to this amendment. Could you elaborate, Steph?
Mr. President, Counselor Benson, yes. There is some language that, there was a question that, to make sure that it said the same thing in both places, and I did check the spreadsheet. It's a reference to the trim language. The percentage of the trim allowed is, it was a reduction from 20% to 10% of a contrasting color, and that language was changed in both the VPO, which was in the amendment, and then to 10% also in the Character Protection Overlay in the spreadsheet. And so, the issue that Ms. Ward raised about them both saying the same thing, I did double-check that, and they do, they do track, and that is certainly the intention of staff, is for them to both say the same.
Okay, so, so, Mr. President, so that they are consistent, and we're talking about approximately 10%, which seems very liberal amount of trim opportunity, if you will.
Yes, the 10% is lowered from 20%, which is what it's drafted as today.
Thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
Petra, does this address the issue that we had on Coors at Montano, where the view corridor, I mean, we had something that came before us at council about two meetings ago, and on appeal? Does this address that issue where they put the, I believe, the swamp air conditioning apparatus on top, and there was an issue with regard to the view corridor?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, that was actually addressed in Exhibit One, within the technical spreadsheet. There was some language in there that addressed the screening of mechanical equipment and corrected, and clarified that, that screening of the mechanical equipment and the mechanical equipment is part of the height. So, going forward, the issue that was raised at the appeal doesn't fix that one, but it would apply in the future, that those would be part of the height measurements.
Okay, so, is, what is, this is exact, this is the distance from the building regarding, I mean, above that?
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego-
Just so I understand what I'm voting on.
Sure. It just simply says that the height, when you're measuring the height, it has to include-
It has to include the-
The mechanical equipment and screening.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other questions to floor amendment Number Six? See none, all those in favor, signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Exhibit Number Seven, and that is Counselor Jones.
Thank you. This is the amendment, the exhibit about revisions to the regulations regarding garage doors, which we've discussed. I think if Counselor Benton would like to discuss this a little further, that would be okay. If not, I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second. I think we are still waiting on Counselor Benton. Let's go ahead and move and table this.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to table Exhibit Number Seven, which is floor amendment Number Seven. All those in favor signify by saying, Counselor Benton is-
Counselor Benton is back, you wanna-
Okay, let's still pass that motion. Counselor Benton, we are on Exhibit Number Seven, floor amendment Number Seven.
Yeah, Mr. President, I would recommend, for consideration, the council that we defer this particular item, since there's not agreement with the stakeholders.
We have a motion and a second for deferral of Amendment Number Seven to Exhibit Eight to oh dash eighteen dash eleven. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed. That passes unanimously.
Are we deferring to a specific date, Mr. Chair?
Till our next meeting.
That'll be deferred until the next meeting. Is, and which date is that? April 17th?
And, Mr. President, how does it work to defer on amendment if we pass the bill tonight?
It's not included, it's for, we can come back later.
But we, can we just bring the amendment back if the bill passes tonight?
Madam Chair, Counselor, I'm sorry, Mr. President, Counselor Harris, no. So, the bill would have to be deferred in order to have that amendment heard at a later time. So, I know that the body just deferred that amendment. It's functionally not particularly relevant unless you also defer the bill. You didn't necessarily need to defer the amendment. You could have just declined to move it today.
Would there be any way to do a, I guess we, and would, if we had a separate bill that just addressed this amendment, would that have to go through the LUPs process necessarily, or could we hold it over and just, because you could make a separate bill that just addressed garage doors.
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, that's correct, and it's a discretion of the president to make that type of assignment, and it would not necessarily have to go to LUPs before it came back to the body.
So, we'd have to vote no on this, and then, and then just come back with a compromise bill that just addressed garage doors. I don't know if that's acceptable to Counselor Jones and Counselor Benton.
That is acceptable to me.
Okay, that'll be fine then.
So, we need to withdraw our motion?
Well, we need to vote, you're saying we need to vote no?
Well, I think we need, need to vote no on the deferral, or just vote, voted do not. Did, had, did the deferral pass?
No.
I move a reconsideration of the vote for deferral.
We haven't voted on the deferral. That was on the agenda to vote on.
Oh, we didn't actually, I thought we passed the deferral. Did we pass, did we, where's crew?
No, not yet. It came up as a deferral. It hasn't been voted on yet.
Mr. President, our records indicate that the body did vote on, to approve that deferral for two weeks, so-
We've got a vote for, a motion for reconsideration on the bill. We have a motion and a second-
On the deferral?
Yes, on the deferral, by Counselor Davis. All those in favor, reconsideration? Yes. Signify by saying yes. All those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We're back on the bill.
And I move a do not pass on, or we just can, we just don't, we can just not act on it.
Mr. President, Counselor, Counselor Harris, correct. Yeah, so, you would just decline to deal with that amendment at this point.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so now we are under-
Oh, actually, you know what? But Amendment Seven is on the floor.
Counselor Benton?
Point of order. So, there was a reconsideration, and that passed, so now I will withdraw my motion.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw the motion by Counselor Benton. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Okay, now we are on Exhibit Numbers Eight, which is now floor amendment Number Seven. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr.-
Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have an amendment to this amendment. So, I think they're going to hand it out, and while they're handing it out, I'll talk a little bit about this. I think this is from the I-25, the North I-25 Sector Plan. I think that there was an oversight that, that the height requirement should have been brought over to the IDO. And basically, what it, what it does, and the new bill, is the Blum Fiesta Park, this amendment basically brings in the CPO from the North I-25 Sector Plan, but it just brings it up to I-25, and every, that's, so everything west of the interstate, everything east is not in the, is not in this CPO, in this amendment. And what it does, it just, it protects the integrity of the Blum Fiesta Park. So, it keeps building heights at 39 feet, so we don't have an issue with balloons launching and landing in the area around Blum Fiesta Park. So, that's the change.
Are there any questions to floor amendment Number One to Amendment Number Seven? See none, all those in favor, signify by Counselor Benton.
Just, just a quick question. With this change, excuse me, with this change on the map, there are representatives of the Climbing Gym here. Would that solve anything or not? It would.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, yes, their property is east of I-25, which would no longer be included in the CPO. That, that also applies for legacy homes, I believe, who also came to speak against the CPO. They are also east of I-25.
And, and, Mr. President, so for Steph, also, the, there's some discussion at LUPs about the fact that there are neighborhood protection boundaries adjacent to single-family zone properties. Would that not take care of most of this issue anyway? I know that there were talk about balloon landings and takeoffs and so forth, but, but with those kind of neighborhood protection boundaries, would, would that be a factor?
Mr. President, Counselor Benson, yes, in the areas where there is a non-residential zone and it is adjacent to a residential zone, the neighborhood edge provision would apply, and so that would apply to the transitions between a more sensitive use, such as residential and a non-residential user.
And the Blum Fiesta Park itself is qualified as non-residential, of course.
Blum Fiesta Park is a little bit different, and so that would be covered by the CPO that Counselor Winter is proposing. The boundaries of this revised CPO would be the city boundary on the north with the Sandia Reservation. I-25 would be the eastern boundary. Pese del Norte would be the southern boundary, and the North Diversion Channel would be the western boundary.
So, I guess my question, Mr. President, is, I mean, given, given the relatively low density, I mean, is there truly a, an issue for, for balloon takeoff and landing with, with the areas that are, that are zoned for, at least according to this amendment, for limited height? I really didn't quite understand how that would, would improve the situation for Blum Fiesta Park.
Counselor Contra, see?
Mr. President, Counselor Benson, the intent of, one of the intents of the North I-25 Sector Plan, east of I-25, was to keep heights low around Blum Fiesta Park. Part of that has to do with something called the box, which is a predictable wind pattern, which people use, and so that is the reasoning behind the 39-foot height limit in the areas on the amendment for you that are in green with the number two on them, and that's what keeps the height at 39 feet.
So, east of I-25, there is no restrict, the same restriction apply as previously under the IDO?
The restrictions would, the amendment before you, the restrictions would apply west of I-25 only and not to the east, and therefore would not impact some of the areas that we have heard some concern about. Those are all east of I-25, and this would only be west of I-25.
Thank you.
Counselor Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. I'm looking at the amendment, and I think there's a mistake, at least, the, the map looks exactly the same. So, tell me what's different. I think the map would not have the stuff east of I-25, but it-
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, it is the same map, however, there is a sentence at the top that says, revise the map below so that the eastern boundary of North I-25 CPO is I-25. So, the, the map was not revised, but the reference to the boundary is, is the amendment in green text.
But then it says revive the map below, so that the eastern boundary, but it, so the actual bill will have a revised map?
Yes, yes, it would actually have a map that follows the formatting of the IDO process. This is the map from the North I-25 Plan. It's a screenshot of it.
So, when the bill gets enrolled in the GROST, and this map won't actually be in it, it'll, this bill directs the staff to change the map?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, that's correct.
Okay. All right, it's a little confusing, but I think I understand.
Any other questions for floor amendment Number One to Amendment Number Seven? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. That carries on an eight to one vote. It carries on an eight to one vote. Now, we're back on the bill for floor amendment Number Seven as amended. Any other questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed? Say no. All those in favor say yes. Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. Okay, we are now under Exhibit Number Nine, and that would be floor amendment Number Eight. We have a motion and a second. Counselor Benton or Counselor Davis?
Mr. President, I'll make it easy. Amendment Nine, Exhibit Nine, amends language in the IDO, just to clarify that parapets are calculated in the building height measurements. I think that was assumed in interpretation from the Planning Department, but this was a clarification and request from neighborhoods to clarify that, to make planning simpler.
Are there any other questions? See none for floor amendment Number Eight, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now on Exhibit Number Ten, which is floor amendment Number Nine. And that is Counselor Davis.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, thank you. Exhibit Number Ten adds a new provision in the IDO that requires a posted sign as a form of development notification for site plan administrative applications. This simply expands neighborhood notice provisions in the IDO.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Borrego to Amendment Number Nine. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Exhibit Number Eleven, which would be floor amendment Number Ten. And that's gonna be Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This affects the downtown neighborhood area, CPO Three, Section Three dash Three. It adds a new section to make this, these provisions consistent with the existing downtown neighborhood sector development plan. I move approval.
We have a motion and four seconds for floor amendment Number Ten to Exhibit Eight to oh dash eighteen dash eleven. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Exhibit Number Twelve, which is floor amendment Number Eleven. Counselor Jones.
This allows decorative outdoor lighting in the downtown center, uptown center, and employment centers. I believe it's just to bring it to current standards. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Vice President Harris. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under Exhibit Thirteen, which is amendment Number Twelve, and I am sponsoring that bill. And this is, the amendment proposes to add a conditional use approval requirement for the use of located near residential zones. This change is similar to the requirements of a conditional use approval for light fueling stations for locations adjacent to a residential zone, but not applicable to increase from adjacent to 330 feet to reflect a potential higher impact of this use locating near residential zones. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Borrego. Any questions? See none, all those in favor of Amendment Number Twelve signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously, and we are back on the bill. Counselor Jones and Counselor Benton to close.
Thank you. Do I need to move Exhibit Fourteen?
I didn't see Exhibit Fourteen there, but-
This amendment to the original legislation will allow amendments beyond the first five exhibits to be adopted through the LUPs in full council process. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for floor amendment Number Thirteen, that is Exhibit Fourteen. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously.
I have a question.
Sorry about that. Counselor Borrego?
Just, since we already voted, but, so, being that we deferred item Number Seven, are we able to bring any other amendments forward at the next, because it's, the process is still open?
Smolanders?
Absolutely.
Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, just to clarify, the Amendment Seven, the, the council's sort of purported deferral of that was effectively undone. It was an improper deferral to begin with. The bill, oh eighteen eleven, passing tonight, cannot, amendments under that bill cannot be voted on at a subsequent meeting.
So, after the effective date of May 17th, there's a year before we can bring any amendments forward. Is that correct?
Madam, Mr. President, Counselor Borrego, unless another bill is put forth, I mean, that was what Counselor Harris was describing, was to put forth potentially a ordinance amending the IDO to deal with specific issues at your next meeting. So, it would have to be in the form of another bill. Amendments to this bill cannot be entertained after tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Winter.
Yeah, just to clarify, thank you, Mr. President, that if, you know, if there was something that we saw that was a glaring deficiency or a big, something that was overlooked, then we could bring something back in another bill.
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Benton and Counselor Jones to close. Counselor Benton?
Well, you know, I want to thank everybody who's involved themselves in this, and I've seen a lot of faces here, some of whom told us last fall to stop what we're doing- seen a lot of faces here, some of whom told us last fall to stop what we're doing and let's start over, or let's wait for a year. But some of those same people came forward with some really good comments that we have now incorporated into the bill. So, I mean, that's the way we've intended it all along. There's been nothing nefarious or intended to pull the wool over anyone's eyes. This is a public process, and it's important, the question that Counselor Winter just asked, that, you know, this is still the governing body. We can still come back and amend anything and everything that is in this ordinance. So I just want to make clear about that. But I also want to thank everybody who has participated in that process.
Counselor Jones?
Very quickly, thank you all. This has been a tough process. It's not over yet. We can expect changes for the rest of our lives, probably, but it's good. It will help, and we'll hope to make it even better. So I would urge your support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt O dash eleven as amended. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed. That carries unanimously. Before we go to our dinner break, we are going to go to Item J, which is R dash twenty-seven. That is Counselor Gibson and Counselor Winter. Counselor Gibson?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be moving R twenty-seven, which is requiring pedestrian crossing improvements at or near the intersection of Louisiana Boulevard and Natalie Avenue, and the formation of a task force to study pedestrian improvements at major roadway intersections near primary and secondary schools. Way to move a do-pass on this.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Winter. Go ahead and proceed.
Do we have anybody signed up?
We have two individuals signed up this evening to speak on the bill, and if you'd like to, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Crystal Copeland, you will be the first speaker, followed by Emily Ashby. Thank you, Ms. Copeland, for being here this evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I am a concerned parent of a Cleveland Middle School student. Tonight, you'll be presented with the resolution by Counselor Gibson and Counselor Winters, and I appreciate your quick action on this resolution. I am here to present a petition in favor of this resolution. I started the petition the day after the tragic crash happened outside my son's school that resulted in the life... the loss of a young girl's life. The petition called for a light system to stop all traffic for pedestrians on Louisiana Boulevard, even after school hours, for all pedestrians so they could cross the road safely. There are often after-school activities from clubs to sports and fun engagements, fun activities for the engagement of families at Cleveland, and so a light signal that only operates during school hours is not enough. The petition has gathered over thirty-five-hundred signatures. My petition... my son, who attends Cleveland, is an active and bright student at Cleveland Middle School. He's also involved in Boy Scouts and is currently a first-class scout on his way to becoming an Eagle Scout, as his older brother did. As the mother of young men, I have chosen to rely on them to be able to provide age-appropriate transportation for themselves on occasion. For my younger son, this involves walking home from Cleveland Middle School one or two days a week, crossing Louisiana Boulevard to get home. He enjoys the exercise, and we encourage this type of healthy lifestyle in our family. In the past, I have encouraged him to cross at the light on Comanche and Louisiana rather than the crosswalk in front of Cleveland. I felt the light was a safer choice for him. Now you have the opportunity to make a safer choice for the students at Cleveland Middle School by supporting the resolution to make all schools own safer for children and families so we can continue to live healthy, active lifestyles, just like we have done in Albuquerque for generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, and good evening, members of the council. My name is Emily Ashby. I'm a freshman journalism student at the University of New Mexico, and I am a former student of Cleveland Middle School and a concerned citizen. I want to take this time to express my gratitude to Counselor Gibson and Counselor Winter for your quick and mindful actions to install a Hawk Light at the intersection of Natalie and Louisiana. Your efforts will greatly benefit and guarantee the safety of the students and faculty of Cleveland, as well as the pedestrians who cross that intersection. And I also want to take this time to thank Counselor Gibson for speaking on the phone with me for a solid twenty minutes and just having a great conversation about this, you know, this tragic event and the actions that you helped advise me to take so we could get this all done. I've had too many close calls at this intersection. Not only myself, but my little brother and my fellow classmates would gamble our safety every day, asking, "Is that car going to notice us as we're crossing the street?" And sometimes we were seen and sometimes we weren't, and that just made us really close to being hit. This is a gamble that students should not have to take, and sadly, my friend's fears became a reality for Justine Eliza Almoina. Although her death or the potential harm of any other student should not have happened, I'm glad something is being done now. You all have great power and great opportunity to pass Bill R eighteen twenty-seven, which will create a safer environment and community at Cleveland Middle School. This bill will also highly benefit those primary and secondary schools that are so important to the city of Albuquerque. Myself, Crystal Copeland, students, faculty, and thousands of people want and need this change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily, for your time. We are back on the floor. Counselor Winter?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just really want to thank Counselor Gibson for taking the lead, and just glad that I can be a part of it. And I want to really, too, thank the mayor and the administration for their input, and I think going forward, not only taking care of this busy road, but looking down the road and partnering with Albuquerque Public Schools to really look at some of these intersections that need help, some of these streets that are very, very busy, and would hope that they would partner with us. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions from this council? Comments? And we will have Counselor Gibson to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. So also, I'd like to thank Counselor Winter for helping me sponsor this very sad turn of events there that I think we've all been saddened by. I know I certainly have. But we do have a plan to go forward. We have a plan to do something that... so that this may not happen again. So, anyway, thanks to the neighborhoods who's been keeping me in the loop. I really appreciate all of the email that I've been getting, and I talked with the mayor about this, and he's absolutely on board. He wants, as we all want, to see an improvement over there. That will work the first time. We only want to do this once. So, anyway, thank you, and I would appreciate your support on this.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson. All those in favor of R twenty-seven signify by saying yes and raise your hand?
Yes.
Yes, those opposed. That carries unanimously. Counselor Winter, Counselor Gibson, thank you very much. We will be taking a dinner break and return in about thirty minutes.